Enough of city council November 28th, the order. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Jacobson.
Here.
Teresinski.
Here.
Lash.
Here.
Gallagher.
Here.
Naylor.
Here.
Baker. O'Leary.
Here.
Mayor Paulson.
Here.
I'd like to move the agenda around if I could. The police station issue is an important issue. I know we have representatives from, I believe maybe possibly two of the firms that we've interviewed in case we would want to have some questions or have them come to the podium and answer any questions that we might have. But I don't believe, I don't believe the representatives from one of the firms here yet. So Dean, how would I do that?
I think they're...
Are representatives from both firms here in case there are questions?
You're from who?
Walt and you're from PSA? Okay. Maybe we'll take care of a couple of them and maybe go to that maybe in 10 minutes. Is that okay? Are we okay with that?
Well, I guess I would question, I know Mr. Baker is most interested in the subject matter and I would think we'd want to wait until at least he shows up.
Yeah, yeah. I talked today. He should be here. So let's move, can we do that at any time then? Can anyone move to, here comes Mr. Baker now. Can we do that at any time then where it seems appropriate?
Yes, it can be either a motion from a council member or you as chair could reorder the agenda.
Okay. Let's reorder the agenda after the first consideration of the December 11th meeting. Is that okay? Are you prepared to answer any questions by yourself or?
I've got presentations coming. It should be here in a minute.
Okay.
Why don't we just go with this agenda? It's not going to be that long, is it? Until you get to item number five?
Just so we have enough time, I guess. I see a meeting one with number four, three taking some time.
I would imagine, Mayor, if I could, I would just move C3 to the bottom.
Okay.
And then you can do the first two. I think the parliamentary C2 could also be moved to the bottom.
Okay. But let's do, yeah, let's do that. Let's move, thank you. Is that a motion then to move C2 and three to come after five?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second to that? Any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Alderman. Okay, the first is a consideration of request to set the December 2011 meeting schedule. Go ahead.
Mayor Council, traditionally we have canceled the last meeting in December and especially this year because it is going to be a holiday. So unless there's specific need that you want to discuss, staff is recommending that we cancel the December meeting.
Are there any questions to that, please?
I'm okay with that to a point, given that that last, that meeting is the day after Christmas, correct? The only thing that concerns me is depending on what our discussion is tonight, if we need to get anything done with the police station, is it still, it'll still be possible to set a special meeting if we need to get anything done, correct?
Yep. Yes, you can. I think it'd be, I don't know how difficult it'd be for the rest of the council, given the holidays, but I guess we can just...
We can bring that up at the appropriate time, right?
Right.
We haven't done that before. We have had a special meeting, you know, the week before Christmas or something like that.
As long as we're, all we're doing is canceling the second meeting in December, I'm okay with that.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, so the meeting schedule has been set. Oh, the motion was, is there a motion?
Some of...
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Now any discussion? I assumed that the motion was on the floor. Okay, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The next consideration is consideration of Willsburg Kelsey Associates Limited for the construction engineering inspection for Bethany Road Bridge replacement project. Mr. Maurer, you want to share information about this?
In September, Bethany Road Bridge construction project beds were received and we had a feasible bid, I think that's in the backup of just under $2 million. And that work, since it's going to be rebuilding the bridge one half at a time, should start after the snow season, which would be roughly late February, early March. And that would require some assistance for construction observation, construction engineering inspection, as it commits for about the seven months of the replacement of the bridge, an inspector or consultant observer to make note of what activities are going on day to day and to provide the federal documentation that would be sufficient for us to receive the considerable federal funds of nearly $1.6 million of the project. We had done similarly as we had done for the architects selection for the police station, we'd done requests for qualifications and RFQ and had three responses of firms that we were familiar with for which they all then interviewed with us in November. And a selection was made of Willsburg Kelsey. They have familiarity with the project contractor as they are just completing a project in Geneva, I believe, over the Fox River with this contractor. They have a considerable structural support staff. Actually, they did the plans for the design of this bridge for replacement and many of the staff also participated three years ago as they did the Bethany Road widening project between Meadow Trail East and Meadow Trail West. They had after their selection by their team, put together this draft that's before you of an engineering agreement. And it's different than what you would expect for architectural services as you're producing or designing a structure, a building. These folks, Willsburg Kelsey, are actually only needing to be there as the contractor is there for his work efforts. So it's not a product they're producing, it's an observation and a documentation of another contractor's services here. So it's not, it's unlike a building, a commitment of architectural fees. It's more as to be present for observing and taking special surveys and whatnot to determine conformity of the original plans in a way that we can then satisfactorily get through the project, have material certifications approved by the Illinois Department of Transportation and get through an audit. The fees seem to be based on a 10-month project, based on three, seven months of intensive work onsite with the contractor and then intermittent times as to close out the project with various following paperwork of material certification reviews and various reports and documents that must be produced for DOT to be satisfied to officially close the project. So it is around a 10-month project. The staffing was, is shown in the backup involving one key person onsite continuously. I think he's committed up to 1,900 hours, at least in this estimate. Our hope is the contractor will be very efficient and get done much sooner and therefore have less need for observation in this gentleman's time on the site. Probably hard to determine what his actual fee charge hour base is with the payroll and overhead and in-house direct service costs is listed in the backup, but that gentleman, which would be full-time, would be around $79.30 per hour. Other support staff is listed there for various structural reviews as the project unfolds with the pile driving and getting clear with what sort of piling links must be ordered for the project and various other structural considerations as they build caissons to build the substructure. And of course, the payment request reviews that the contractor turns in and has to be documented. So we feel the total maximum fee of $213,000 roughly, based on this 10-month contract, is certainly very conservative. Our belief is maybe 6% to 10% lower could be had with the efficiencies of completing the time, completing the project earlier than the original scope. And we would hope you would consider this agreement as we would only be charged for the hours that are needed and not for the full value of this project unless it goes the full 10 months. Be open for questions.
Okay, so let me make sure I understand this. It's $79 an hour is the rate.
Roughly, yes.
And I think part of this has to do with the fact that, you know, we've reduced our staffing over there in your department as a result of the cutbacks a couple of years ago. And so what we're faced with is some of the things I think we knew we were going to be faced with, and that was contracting offer services that would need to be contracted out on a per-project basis. So, you know, I think that's important to keep that in mind. But I would like to, that's my own thought. I'd like to hear the feelings that the council has in terms of what their thoughts are in this particular, this particular concept. Yes, please. Mr. Teresinski.
Thank you. Just from an overall perspective, I guess, you know, particularly given all the conversations we've had about cost, cost control and project management in the last couple of months. Looking at this project, I guess the very first question would be, you know, this deconstruction gave us a bid of $1,009,000 to do the, do the construction work on the project. Does that include the design of the bridge and so forth or is that somewhere else?
No, deconstruction would just be the actual constructing building, replacing the old bridge with the new.
And the design aspect?
That's been completed also by Willsburg Kelsey. That was done here in the last 12, 14 months.
Can you just remind us of what that number was by chance? If you have it.
I think it was around about $145,000 and there was subconsultant assistance for negotiating the two parcel acquisitions of right-of-way along the bridge. That was extra dollars, I believe.
Okay. So $145,000, $150,000 for the design. We're going to spend, based on this estimate, which you're saying is conservative, but using the numbers that we have here, $212,000 for just the inspection piece, which is going to be over 10% of the construction piece by itself.
It's about 11% of construction if you take these value. But if, our feeling is it'll probably be like more like, instead of 11%, probably more like the 10% number.
So if we go back to the original budget, you know, deconstruction came in over, as I read this, 2.5%.
Right.
So from a total perspective on the entire project, from the design, the building and the inspection, is that within what we, our original estimates were or how does that relate to what our plan was?
We applied, I'm guessing, or I'm certain, about four years ago for Illinois major bridge funds. And we take a guess at that time before anybody, you know, actually makes design details for the project. We make guesses at that time when we apply for grants what the cost of the project would be. We figured, I think, 1.99 million to include roughly 1.8 for the, 1.8 million for the bridge and 200,000 for the inspection. So yes, we are over on the bridge cost, I believe.
But the inspection cost is pretty close.
It's about close to what we expected.
Because that's what I was concerned about, given all of our conversations, 10% just inspection sounds very odd. How does that relate to any other normal building project?
Well, the last time we had really full-time consultant inspection on a federal project was, I think, 2003 for the Taylor Street Bridge. And that came in right around $200,000. And that bridge was, I'm thinking about 1.8 million, something like that. Generally, we have DeKalb staff support for projects like these that, that sort of helped reduce some of the consultant load of the cost. But starting so early in the year, yet while we're still trying to do our own in-house designs to prepare for summer construction, we just, we can't double up somebody's time on, on this kind of a commitment of seven to 10 months. So it's in this case, just almost 100% outsourced work. Very little DeKalb support staff would be involved.
One other question that we've done. The relationship between deconstruction and Willsburg Kelsey. From the standpoint of that circumstance, working together in the past and so forth, I know there's been concern about making sure we have due diligence and third-party expertise brought into the process. I guess this can be a positive or one might think it could be a concern too.
We did some checking of the agencies that employed Willsburg Kelsey and their, and their construction of their bridges. In one case was the Fox River Bridge. And they have good reports of great, good support and guidance by the onsite inspector in enforcing the plans and specs in accordance with the contracts. In other words, there wasn't any sliding or any favoritism or anything. So we think we have a very quality individual involved that's experienced. And in this case, the contractor and the observer would know each other from this past relationship and know, you know, how to make efficiencies work and how to work cooperatively and, and to, you know, have the best focus or best effort on behalf of the agency at risk here. So we're feeling very comfortable with that relationship.
Thank you.
Please, Mr. Naylor.
First of all, I would concur with the recommendation for this award. As you can note in the backup, there was, I believe, seven, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 bidders on the job. And with deconstruction being the low bid, the prices range from their low bid all the way up to about 2.4 mil, or 2.5 mil and 2.6 mil. So the bid is very competitive. I'm familiar with this contractor as well as with Willsburg, et cetera, and they are all very competent consultants and contractors out there, particularly deconstruction has built many, many, many bridges throughout, over the last 20, 20-plus years, honestly. Likewise, with the agreement, most federal jobs, which this is, will allow up to 15% for construction service fees. So I think the 10% is well within the range and is a good, is a good number. I support it.
We did check with our second choice selection. The team had a one, two, and three choice. The second choice selection had as their main charge-out rate, has had, as their main employee for the full-time inspection onsite, their charge-out rate was over $100 an hour. That compares with about $79 for Willsburg Kelsey.
Anyone else like to speak to this? Okay, do I hear then a motion to bring back the December 12th meeting, an engineered agreement?
Removed.
The move by Mr. Gallagher, second by Mr. Naylor. Any further discussion on this engineering agreement to be brought back? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, we'll proceed this at our meeting in December then. Thank you. Okay, then we're going to move then on to the next consideration of approval of a selection of an architect for the design services relating to the police station construction. Subject to negotiation of a mutually acceptable agreement, authorization for staff to negotiate an agreement relating to architectural services subject to approve by the council and/or approval of a process for the solicitation or selection of architects to provide professional services relating to the construction of a new police station. I think that's the longest consideration I've ever read. So having that been said, I know we had some lengthy discussion at our last meeting and I believe that it was thought that we would want to hear from at least a couple of the construction firms or the architectural firms. They are here tonight and I guess what I'd like to do is see if anyone, how would you like to proceed with this? Do you want to just ask questions? Do you want to open it up for discussion? Would you? Please.
I'm sorry, I was going to say if they have, you know, presentations or anything prepared, we'd cer, I can't speak for the council, I'd certainly like to see them.
Okay. Any other, any other thoughts, Dave?
Which firms are here right now?
I believe PSA Dubeary and Walt, the two firms that were, I think, the final two that were part of the process. How recently was that? Was that last?
It was last November.
Last November. Mr. Naylor. Dave, I'm sorry, Dave. How would you like to proceed?
If we could get a short presentation, like 20 minutes or less from each or both of them, if you got, you said you had a presentation coming.
Okay.
So maybe the other firm could start then and...
Did you have anything you wanted? Did you just want to answer questions? Did you?
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't, I don't know if all the architects were, were planning to do any presentation.
Right.
If they were just here to answer any questions. Obviously, if there is a presentation and council's okay with that, that's fine, but, but I don't know if all of them are here, are ready for that.
Okay, yeah. We don't want to put anyone on the spot, but I appreciate you being here at least so we could, if there are questions that come up during our discussion about your firm or your process or how it would work, that would, would help us.
Why don't we just start with the gentleman right there in the front and ask him some questions and when his presentation shows up?
Go forward with it. Okay. Yeah, please, go ahead and identify yourself. I know you're kind of out on the spot with, yeah, without, but I do want to move on this and I'd hate to see your partner show up. I do, absolutely. Well, I, yes.
Mayor, if I may, just comment first, excuse me. You know, I would think we'd want to stick with PSA initially. And if you're going to request presentations, I would think you would start with PSA first and if you have some reason to move on to the second choice, which is Walt, then you would offer them the opportunity to put together a presentation likewise in a similar fashion as what PSA does have. So I would think you'd want to start with PSA as a limited initially.
This is PSA.
And then if you want to go on, then you can go on if you're not satisfied currently with their presentation, if that's what they have. But I would think that you'd offer them some time to prepare it and be able to present it out and then do the same with the other firm if you elect to go on.
I think that's fair enough. But we can't take action tonight anyway.
If they're not prepared to do it tonight, then maybe they could do it at the next meeting or something like that, or a special meeting.
Okay, thank you. Again, I think if you look at the considerations to do just that, it's approval of a process that we want to move forward. So hopefully we can come to some conclusions tonight about the process from this point on. So with that being said, anyone else have any comments before we move on? Okay, please.
All right. Well, my name is Randy Gibson and I am the president of PSA Dubeary. I've been with the firm for about 26 years and have been very involved in the public safety work. And our presentation is coming. I think what we'd like to do is just pass out a handout for each of you rather than go, unless you prefer to have it electronically, we can just...
No, I think, in the interest of time, I think, just a handout. We could follow along with you. Thank you.
I'll take one. I guess while we're handing this out, I would like to thank the council for the opportunity to be here tonight. I know there has been a lot of question and maybe some misinformation regarding the scope of our services and fees and so forth. And it's my opinion that you build a trusting relationship by having dialogue. So we really appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight. Also with me is Larry Levacek, who is our project manager, and John Tolman, who would be our project architect. And I would point out that John is a graduate of DeKalb High School. So anyway, what we'd like to do is spend about 15 minutes really just working through this presentation and addressing some of the questions that I believe are on the council's mind. The first page if you would go to is, is basically an organization chart. And the takeaway here is, is that we are a full-service firm and we would be looking to provide all of the necessary services, not just the architecture, but the building engineering, interior design, specification of furniture, security electronics, technology, all would be performed by our organization. The only organ, the only service that would not be provided by our firm would be the civil engineering, the site engineering, which would be performed by Baxter and Woodman here in DeKalb.
And not the construction manager or the construction manager in?
Pardon me?
You said the only service you didn't provide was the civil engineering. You're not actually providing the construction manager or the general contractor?
We are not. That's correct. If we go to the next page, just a brief description of our firm as it relates to its public safety experience. We have been doing public safety projects here in Illinois for about the last 30 years. And as you can see, we've done approximately 90 police facilities. And I know there was a question that, at least that I read in a newspaper last week that talked about us being a Virginia company. We were founded in Illinois in Peoria in 1954. So we've been in Illinois for, what, 57 years? And the work will be produced out of our Elgin office. So I'm not sure if that was a concern or not, but I thought I would mention that. If we turn to the next page, it really gives an overview of the public safety projects that we've produced over those 30 years. And we have produced small communications facilities like we did for the city here approximately a year ago, up to a $70 million replacement headquarters for the city of Dallas, Texas, the Jack Evans Project, and really all kinds of projects in between. And those were largely projects where we performed in a very similar role in terms of full-service capacity to our clients. We go to the next several pages. I don't want to spend a lot of time because I know we don't have a lot of time, but the next several pages really speak to the, to the, some specific project experience we have. As you can see, the DeKalb renovation here that I spoke of earlier in terms of the communication center. And these are just generally projects that we've completed in the Chicago metropolitan area recently with a couple of exceptions. The Romeo Police and Village Hall was a project that was completed approximately 18 months ago, again about 118,000 square feet. And it was a police and village hall project. The next project that you'll see is the Hanover Park Police Facility. This is a project that's a little more akin to what you folks are considering, considering to undertake. It is a project that will be completed on time, on budget this, this coming month for the Village of Hanover Park. Has some, some interesting similarities to your project. Very tight site, along commuter rail line, active rail line. So there's a lot of, a lot of similarities there. Niles Police Station, which was actually a project that's been completed for almost 10 years ago, 50,000 square foot building up in Niles. Moraleen Police Headquarters, 66,000 square foot, $10.8 million project that was completed approximately five years ago for the, for the city of Moraleen. And I should caution, we've put the construction costs on each of these, but the caution here is some of these projects are older and so comparing your 35,000 or 40,000 square foot building with a construction cost with these are not, they're not apples to apples.
Question related to that, does construction cost mean every penny that went into the entire project or is that just the bricks and mortar that, that, that was spent on it?
Mayor, great question because it's always confusing. The, the numbers that we're showing here are construction cost and it's very different than a total project cost.
With the, with the manager and the architects and civil engineering and all that stuff?
Exactly.
Okay.
So these are only construction costs.
Okay, thank you.
In the, in the true sense of bricks and mortar. Next project is a project that we're very proud of that was just completed earlier this year out in Tallison, Arizona, which is suburban Phoenix. A, a new facility for a, for a community out there. Again, $7 million construction cost for about 23,000 square feet. Lead project, again, very, very tight site. We've chosen to include this one because of the fact that it had site challenges. Next project that I'd like to highlight is a project that was done in Colleen, Texas. Again, $22 million plus project, 80,000 square feet, state-of-the-art facility. Very community-oriented project in terms of, of what was included in that project. I should also mention that all of these projects are projects similar to what we've been involved with here in DeKalb over the last five years, where we've done the, the planning, we've done the programming, which we've done for your facility twice, I guess, in the last five years. Dallas, as I mentioned earlier, 360,000, 65 or 70 million dollar project that we did. And then Gilbert, Arizona, we just did a police and courts facility for them a couple of years back. In the interest of time, I'm going to continue on. You can see there are a number of projects that continue on, and again, 90 projects in total. What I guess we would like to, and I'm gonna have Larry come up here in just a minute, but what I'd like to do is focus on fee and scope issues that we understand have surfaced. And let me talk a little bit about the fee. The fee that we determined, both initially and then in a revised format, was based upon what we estimated the effort that was needed to do to complete the project. It was not based on an arbitrary percent of construction. We actually went through the project on a discipline-by-discipline, at a discipline-by-discipline level, and determined what it would need to, what the fee would need to adequately serve the needs of the city to develop this project. And that was generally based on the fact that we, you know, do several of these projects every year, and we've got a pretty good handle on what is needed. So, I think when people quote percentages of construction, that's really a rather arbitrary number. It's certainly the way our industry has often quoted fees. The fee that we quoted in both cases was actually based on the scope of work that we understood the project to be, and what we needed to deliver the project successfully. The other point that I would make under bullet two is, this is an all-inclusive fee. This is not a fee that is subject to revision as the project goes on. The fee would only be revised in the event that the city came to us with a revised scope of the project. For instance, if you decided to halfway through the project add a 50 or 100-car parking deck to the project, obviously that would be a material change to the project, and we would request a renegotiation of the fee. Absent that, the fees quoted are the final fees. It's not subject to change order, it's not subject to, I'll say, nickel and dime of the process. They're also all-inclusive in terms of all the services that the city needs to successfully develop the project. So it's the architecture, the architectural planning, the program revisions, all of the building engineering, mechanical, electrical plumbing, structural, fire protection, it's the interior design, it's the specification, and in some cases, design of all movable furniture and equipment. It is the design of all the technology of the project, of all the security electronics for the project, so it is an all-inclusive fee. The next comment, or next bullet point is reduction of scope and fee from the original proposed contract. And as you can see in your handout, what we did to go from approximately 1.1 million to $807,000 is we removed the civil engineering from the base contract, and any of the markup associated with that contract. We elected to, for at least for your consideration, the use of a vendor in lieu of a consultant to design the firing range, design. And a note on the firing range, I think there's been maybe some confusion on what is in the project. The project, as we have envisioned it at this point, is the entire project, including the build, the shell for the firing range, but not the special HVAC and such that would be required to make that range functional. And then reduction, excuse me, in the building construction due to higher potential costs related to the traffic signal, because the traffic signal, it is our understanding, is included in the all-in construction cost, and it needed to come out of the project fund. And we were a little unclear on that when we developed the fee initially. And then finally, elimination of the fall 2012, not 2011, early site preparation package. So that is what drove the delta difference between the roughly 1.1 and the 807,000. The fee was not modified, as I say, the scope was modified, and therefore the fee changed because of the scope.
Question, if I could, the elimination of the 2012 early site preparation package, could you elaborate on that? Does that have anything to do with the fact that if we moved on this relatively quickly, that we would not be able to have it enclosed and work through the winter, or elaborate on that?
Yeah, Mayor, we're gonna talk about that in a few minutes, but the short answer is, is that window is certainly closing.
Right.
But we feel that if we can get started shortly, we can get enough work done that we can get the project out to bid and get the critical...
The site preparation pack, early site preparation package expert there.
It was actually a 2011 fall preparation package, which was taking the site, clearing it of trees, preparing some rough...
And we did that, we did some of that.
Right, some of that's already done. It was possibly relocating utilities. It kind of depended on how early we were going to get in. Now it's obviously that we're not going to get, you know, in-depth into the site this fall, so we've just taken that off the table, and that will be lumped in with the spring package.
Okay, thank you.
And we will talk about, in a few minutes, I guess, the...
Timelines.
The timelines, yeah. Next page, CM, qualification assistance. We were under the impression that maybe there was some concern about what our involvement would be in the selection of the CM. In fact, that we would drive that process, and have a, basically determine who the CM would be. Let me tell you, we have no interest whatsoever in driving that decision. What is contemplated in our contract is basically an entrusted advisor role to the city, in order to, A, develop the RFP, to participate in the interview process with CMs, and then basically answer any questions that council and staff have relative to who might or might not be the most qualified CM. Again, kind of some feedback that we got was that we would be driving that, and that we'd be making that call, and I can assure you that we have no interest, and probably our professional liability insurance may not allow us to do that if we wanted. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Larry and talk about the, Mayor, the kind of the critical scheduling issues and such, before we wrap this up.
Thank you very much for the time tonight. The schedule, the primary objective for you, especially to save money on your project, would be to get the building enclosed before, not this winter, obviously, but next winter. To do that, a normal design process in a building, to go from a programming stage all the way through construction document, where we would go out to bid, would take approximately nine, 10 months. Obviously, that would put us almost at the beginning of fall of 2012. The one thing that we're able to do is accelerate that construction process, or the design process, because of our expertise, and we can pretty much do it in about a six-month period, which would have us going out to bid approximately in June, and if we use the right techniques and everything, we could be able to get the building under enclosure with the shell before harsh winter conditions hit. Why is that important to the city of DeKalb? They can definitely limit the amount of temporary heat required. If we have to enclose, provide temporary enclosures around the entire building structure, and heat the entire building structure to complete critical construction phases in the building, it costs a lot of money to provide that fuel to do that. Upwards of anywhere from a quarter million dollars to $500,000. They're predicting some harsh winters, at least this year, and they were last year, so I would think the trend might continue on. It would allow us to continue to construct in the building if we have it enclosed in winter throughout those months. How is that going to save you money? It will reduce your general condition costs, having your contractor on-site for a smaller amount of time, rather than pulling them off-site, or slowing down as you go through a full enclosure. And it will also reduce escalation costs. As the project goes beyond a set schedule, it increases in schedule, you're opening yourself up to possible inflation, inflationary measures, which could increase the prices. So, how is it that we can do this building in six months instead of 10 months? You may be asking yourself that question. There's some pretty logical explanations for it. One, we have an entirely experienced police design team. The entire team has worked together on multiple police projects over the last few years. What that allows us to do is make quality decisions at a very quick pace. If you make the wrong decisions, you may not encounter it till later on in the design process, you have to back up, you have to correct mistakes. When you do that, it takes away extra time. Our architects and engineers are all in-house. What that allows us to do is provide real-time coordination between all of our disciplines as we design every day. We're not having to update base plans and files for consultants that are outside of our own firm on maybe a weekly basis. So, this real-time data, as soon as I move a wall, my engineer is seeing that wall moved, and he can adjust his plan as well that same day. So there isn't any possibility for extensive rework happening as those revisions are made. Knowledgeable selection of materials and construction materials. We select materials that allow construction of the shell during colder temperatures. This gives us a little bit of wiggle room, as the construction extends possibly into November, December, even January. If we're using the right shell materials, whether it's precast, or whether it's a metal stud backup, or whether it's metal panels, if we choose materials wisely, and we're anticipating what the construction schedule is going to be, we can ensure that we can continue construction even into the cold weather to get the shell fully enclosed, which will allow you to reduce those temporary heating charges. And our use of BIM, Building Information Modeling, some of you may have not heard this, it's a 3D computer-aided drawing process, that really, we draw this building completely in three dimensions. What this allows us to do is, we have what's called clash detection tools. As my mechanical engineer is placing ductwork in a building, the computer program will actually alert us if a ductwork is running into a beam. Why is that important to you? We can correct those mistakes, potential mistakes out in the field, before they become real monetary mistakes. We're correcting them in design. We're actually doing field coordination during the design process, so that when it actually goes into construction, we're avoiding those problems, which could eventually end up being delays, and which could end up being cost prohibitive-type measures. We can also use that model to do some advanced things, like calculate lighting levels, and we can actually run calculations on the energy consumption of the building. So as we're changing building types, if we change a wall type that has a different R-value, we can see what the impact is going to be for the energy consumption of the building when we do that. If we change lights from a fluorescent T8 fixture to a T5 fixture, we would be able to see what the light level calculation's going to be, what the, what the cost of that could be in real time, to further help us make those good decisions. Some of the schedule factors, these are challenging schedule factors, but they're nothing that we haven't encountered before, and we're used to dealing with. The importance behind me highlighting so many schedule factors is that if you haven't had somebody who's used to dealing with these, and can understand the complexities, and has a relationship with these people, these could cause delays, unnecessary delays in the project as well. The traffic study, the Lincoln Highway, dealing with IDOT, is something that has to happen right away. During the schematic design of the project, we can't possibly complete the site design until we know what curb cuts are going to be allowed, what the traffic signalization is going to be, is there going to be a right-hand turn lane that's going to be required into the site? So having those relationships with Baxter and Woodman and IDOT up front will allow us to push that process as much as possible. Similarly, the Illinois Department of Corrections review. Police stations are required to submit for an Illinois Department of Corrections review, and we have a very strong relationship with Bruce Bryan, down at the Illinois Department of Corrections. Our firm not only does police stations, but we do a lot of correctional facilities all over the nation. So we have these strong relationships. In fact, we have a very strong history of passing these reviews after the very first review, so that, again, saves time, we don't have to go back and resubmit and make changes to the design. The railroad coordination. The Union Pacific Railroad, right behind your site, has right-of-ways, has easements. It's very important to contact Union Pacific Railroad early on in this process, to determine what those are. If you do not identify what those are, and you begin your schematic design, and you end up encroaching into some of those easements or right-of-ways, you could end up paying additional construction costs to provide shoring, so you don't undermine the railroad tracks, and you could also incur charges to have a Union flagger out on the site, too, if you're too close to the track during construction. So if we know those requirements up front, then we can go ahead and plan for them, design around them, and you can save money on that as well. These are just some functional diagrams of, I believe this is Colleen, Texas, yeah, police station. And, you know, this is just an example of some of the things we do early on to plan, and what the, and it kind of highlights the complexities of planning in a police station. There are so many different functions within a police station, they're so intertwined, that if you're not doing efficient floor plans, you're not creating efficient floor plans, you don't understand police operations, you could end up designing a floor plan that has your police officers running from one end of the building to the other end of the building, and back to the other end of the building, to just do their daily functions. We understand the flow of detainees into the station, the booking, the holding, the evidence process, the report, all the steps necessary to streamline that process, make it efficient, make it efficient, use a very efficient floor plan, get the police officers in, have them do their work, and have them get back out on the streets where they can do quality work fastest. We're very knowledgeable in industry standards. We are fully aware of all the detention-grade equipment, the security and technology equipment that has to go into specialized police stations, ballistic-rated type of enclosures. And we are very aware of the high degree of separation between public and police areas that needs to happen. Obviously, we want the police station to be a place that is inviting to the public, but we understand that there needs to be security between the public and the police as well. Not only to protect the police from people coming in, but to protect the citizens from detainees that are possibly in the police station as well. And you can see kind of in this diagram, in some of the spaces down below, that we're showing, even in this diagram, some planned expansion areas, and if you were to stack these diagrams, you would see how some of the colors end up lining up one another, the circulation corridors are well-defined. The last thing we're aware of is CLEA accreditation. We design all of our facilities to be able to be CLEA-accredited. CLEA is the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. It's basically a guideline for police agencies around the nation that's set up to provide policies and practices that are reviewed and updated, greater accountability, and the one that often seems to strike a note is the reduced risk and liability exposure through best practices. When we're designing the detention construction, and we're designing for a separation of adults and juveniles, the chain of evidence and storage, specialized HVAC system design, we're doing all these things that the policies, the procedures, the operations of the police station will be in a line with achieving CLEA accreditation. And what that does is, you know, if you have a chain of evidence that is broken, or you have an incident where a juvenile's exposed to an adult, adult detainee, all of a sudden you end up in a situation where you could end up having possible convictions getting overthrown, getting thrown out of court, if you do not have your police station laid out in the correct way. So those are basically the ways that PSA D'Ubari can help you with your police station.
I just have one final...
I just have one final comment that I did not mention when I was up here previously, and that is, the contract that we submitted had a range of building size that went, I believe, from 30 or 31 up to 35. And I know that that's caused a little bit of concern on how big a building can we afford to have and so forth. And really, we put a range in because we're seeing for the first time in a couple of years upward pressure on bids. There's been a labor contract that was passed which is about a 3.5% increase in labor rates, which will be passed on to the city and any other entity that's building. Our objective is to build as many square feet for the budget as we can, and that may mean 35, that may mean 40,000. We simply don't know until we get into the process and are able to, you know, put enough design on paper to be able to start talking intelligently on how big a project that we can afford. I'd love to be able to sit here today and say, for the project budget that you have outlined, it's X number of square feet. We simply can't do that. What we do know is that size is a critical issue for you, and the balancing act for us will be to drive an acceptable level of quality in terms of materials, durability, ease of maintenance with the appropriate or the amount of square feet that we can afford to build. And then just lastly, and Larry started touching on that, is as you can certainly appreciate, a police station is a 24/7, 365-day facility. And quite honestly, the design fees and frankly even the bricks and mortar costs that you will spend, although it seems like a big ticket, over the physical life of this building, 30, 40 years, the operational numbers will be much greater than the amount of money that you spend day one. If a building is designed as efficiently as possible from a police operations perspective, the amount of savings that you will see over that 30 or 40 years will dwarf the kind of numbers that you're talking about in this contract. Conversely, if it's done poorly or not done as efficient as it can, you'll spend a lot more over the life of the building than the design fees that you're contemplating. So, anyway, that's, thank you for the time, and we'll certainly answer any questions that you'd like to throw our way.
Any questions and comments as to how we move forward with this process? Yes, please.
Well, I just have a couple of quick questions. As we talked about quality level and space, two key issues, and I know the cost of the architect is also a key issue, and you've talked a little bit about that. But just from a quality perspective, in talking about a number of 35,000 square feet to hit a number of an overall budget of 12 million all-in with everything included, not to exceed, et cetera, from a quality level, how do we spec to you what quality level we're anticipating? How do we communicate that, or has that been communicated?
Well, again, I don't know that we've gotten that far into the process. We have up to this point generally talked square footages when we've put together a couple of different building programs. Moving forward, I think we need, we typically will have workshops, a series of workshops where we define, I mean, I think that the dollars are fairly well-defined, but in terms of quality level, types of materials, preference for design style, those workshops are utilized as a method to kind of bring that out. We like to actually document those discussions in a mission statement for the project. So, as we meet with staff all through the process, we've got a living document that says, this is what the objective, these are the objectives for the project, this is the mission statement for the project, which drives all of our decision-making along the way.
Okay, let me follow up just quickly on that. You know, given that you've outlined a 35,000 square foot, you must have anticipated a quality level brick masonry. Can you just elaborate on that just quickly?
Yeah, I think that's a correct statement. I mean, you would not build a building such as this using, for instance, a lot of drywall partitions. Again, it's a 24-hour-a-day facility, so yeah, I think for the 35,000 square feet, you know, I think the level of quality at your budget can be hit.
Okay.
It will involve choices on where we spend that money to upgrade materials and maybe de-emphasize.
Well, some of the people in community have asked about, you know, we built a new high school and, you know, they're appreciative of the quality level of that building and would expect to have something on power. I mean, that's not overdone, but it's a real nice quality level and we're expecting that. I just want to make sure that we're including that in this number, so.
The D-word, durability, has as much to do with these facilities as anything because they're so highly used and.
Okay, just one other question then on the space aspect. That has been a long discussion on behalf of the council over the last five years and more, I guess. But to the extent that there's an option there to get space added to the facility at a later date to accommodate some growth, could, again, could you talk about how you would do that? It wasn't mentioned here in your discussion how you would allow for that in this carefully laid-out building. I'm worried about if we expand, then it's not laid out carefully.
Well, certainly, we need to do some upfront planning work on what may need to expand, what you would care to have expand. The reality is, is that, you know, the fact is, if you have a 50,000 square foot need at some point in the future and you're only building 35, say, it's, you can't incrementally grow offices, grow conference space, grow EOC, communications, and so forth by, you know, 5 or 10% here. And you just can't blow the building up like a balloon and it gets bigger. So, it really needs, you have to anticipate the areas that you would have growth to where you can add on distinct additions for a specific function. And that's how that, unfortunately, the only way to expand a building such as this, because it isn't, it isn't an office building where you can just add, you know, to the side of the building and add more offices, or it's a retail space that, you know, you just take space. A highly complex building.
Other comments or questions? Dave?
Some clarification, some things that I've gotten straight. The firing range is 3,200 square feet, is that approximately?
Correct.
And that's included in that number of 35,000 if we were to build to 35,000?
That is correct.
Well, we're not, the current space at the police station is occupying now is 17,000. We wanted 35,000 minimum plus a pistol firing range, all the way back 10 years. That's been the directive. I will not accept anything less than 35,000 square feet, but I'm just one vote, plus the firing range. And I know that you have to engineer that firing range, that probably 60 to 70% of that 800,000, give or take, total cost is going to be included anyway. You can't get around it. You still have to build the space even if you don't bring in that vendor to finish it.
That's correct.
That's something I want everybody on the council to understand. I've been hoping for 40,000 square feet. One thing that I talked to the chief about today was that in the past, we were 55,000 square feet at 17 million presentation, which got put on hold and then ultimately rejected. That was 17 million. But I always argued at 20 million because we paid 2 million for the land and there's a $1 million fund that we also borrowed in a bond anticipation note that we were replenishing all these funds. I know that got raided to keep from not being able to make payroll a few years ago. And Rudy, I didn't ask you before the meeting, but did that get replenished? Is that, that bond anticipation over that 1 million was to cover all the civil engineering, engineering, and architectural? So, this was, we're really in apples-to-apples. We went from 55,000 square feet at 17 plus 3 down to, in my mind, 12 million dollars, 35,000 square feet plus 3. Is this 3 now is organ the 12 million, or is that 1 million replenished? We need some clarification. There's big numbers here.
Yeah, the 2 million to purchase the property as well as the 1 million that we did for a bond anticipation note for architect fees, we did hold for a couple of years. When it seemed like we weren't going to move on it, we put it as part of the refinancing of the debt. So, that was all paid back. So, that's why we don't have that million dollars right now that we were holding for a while for architects. So, should we have to proceed, we would have to probably do another bond anticipation note for architect services.
Well, I'm trying to get clarification for the council. So, I understand and we understand. In my mind, we had 2 million for the property, 1 million to cover whether it was 35,000 square feet or 55,000 square feet would have covered it for the architectural and engineering, plus then whatever it cost to build the project. We're down from 17 to 12 million, but do we have 12 plus 2 plus 1? Or do we just have 12 plus 2 or just 12 total? I mean, that's a critical question that I need the answer.
Okay, so it's, if we're sticking with the 12 number for the, for the construction, it's 12 million, and then we use 2 million for the acquisition of the land. That has been part of the bond restructuring. So, if you want to call it, it is 12 plus 2, if you will.
So, the 2 is already taken care of?
Yes.
So, we have 12 plus 2, but where's the 1? Did you replenish that?
No, we paid that back because we weren't going to use it.
It's coming up, well.
That's something for us to debate over the next week or two, but I thought we had 12 plus that 1 available. The other question I had is that the fee structure changed, and did you actually take a cut? I heard you say a minute ago that your fees are same, it's just been separated out. But did you actually cut your fee by 100 or 200,000 or?
We did. I think our, our fee was reduced by about 150,000.
Okay, because a minute ago I thought I heard you say that you didn't reduce your fee, just separated everything out.
Well, I probably misspoke. What I was trying to indicate is we came to the reduced fee through a slightly reduced scope. But in, you know, the PSA Dubeary fee for us did go down by approximately $150,000.
And partly because the scope of your responsibility was reduced?
That's correct.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you very much. Earlier this year, you were awarded a contract in Galesburg, Illinois with the public schools down there, is that correct? That's correct. And so, if you may, please indulge me. One of the things that they had done down in Galesburg is they were putting together a $110 million package to redo all their schools down there, right? And then they were going to do the first phase was 30 million dollars. And you were the successful company selected as the architect on that. That's correct. So, they had put together an implementation committee comprised of school district faculty, administrators, and community members, and they were charged with evaluating the qualifications of architectural firms interested in this particular project. Formal proposals were submitted by 15 firms or teams, and then this number then was culled then to eight firms who were invited then to make presentations to the committee. And four of those eight firms, Cordegin-Clark of Aurora, Itner Architects of Fairview Heights, PSA Dubeary, of course, of Peoria, and Wold Architects of Palatine were then the final four cut. They were then selected to participate in a design competition and to host members of the implementation committee who then traveled around to check out some of their past school projects firsthand. Following the site visits and design competition, the implementation committee then met to rank and order the four final firms where PSA Dubeary then edged out Cordegin-Clark. Congratulations on that. Where we are in this entire process right now, if I may ask, is that did we put together any type of facilities committee? Did we put together any type of implementation committee? And to that, I draw a blank. And I would want to know, you know, as we go forward this, and this is, it's a, some people would say, well, it's a small amount of money for what you're paying for the actual school, the school district's building. But I remember serving on the finance committee, and they also had a facilities committee, and they took their time going through as they jumped into this $110 million project. When we put together our implementation or our facilities committee, because you're familiar with that type of process, which you successfully came up.
I know what I'm usually, but.
Yeah, but I didn't know if, we didn't do anything like that, did we, on the city? Do we have police officers or support staff on that particular committee to go through?
We had police officers and staff from all the different divisions sit and meet with the space needs analysis. We're not at a design stage at this point. But also, there was a citizens committee, and there was also, there was also the review of the architects in the, in response to the RFQ.
And I think that's kind of what the major holdup was. And I mean, I want to be respectful with Wold Architects are here this evening too. I mean, we can, we've talked about this before, I remember two and a half hours, I think, last week. But I guess that's, that's the biggest concern for myself. And if we go back before we get on too many tangents, in regards to this particular cow item, it says, which of these different items do you support? And I, I like the fact that as this particular school district got involved in this and they said, hey, let's put together a formal committee where we are right now, let's have a competition. I mean, they were able to go out and get 15 different firms and then reduce that number down, and you were the successful bidder at that particular point. So, I know we can eliminate a lot of time and say, hey, listen, just give them the particular job like that. But our due diligence, and for myself, as we start to move around these dollars like this, if we can save 200, 300,000 on this, that's all interest that we can save in the future as we go out with a 20-year bond on this particular issue. So, that's the only reason why we're, that's why I'm so overly concerned about the cost.
Didn't we already go through that process though? I'm hearing the chief say that we already went through some of the process, we interviewed several firms.
Right, we went through that process, and we had a citizens committee, and then we had the committee that interviewed the.
The firms?
The firms, the RFQs. And what I heard Randy say a while ago is there would be workshops for input on design, and there would be workshops on the durable, you know, the materials used in durability. So, that's part of the process moving forward. And that's, this process, this project is a lot more involved than I think a lot of the community understands, and that's why we have to get moving on it. Otherwise, we're going to be into 2013.
Other comments? And then we do need to wrap up with some sort of a conclusion. We're already behind. We got a whole audience out there that's ready for the next meeting. Ms. Lash?
Thank you. You know, part of the reason that I wasn't comfortable is just because I hadn't ever met them, so, you know, I hadn't seen any history. This has been wonderful. Thank you for coming. My concern with putting it off and going through another process is, yeah, we may save 200 or 300,000 in the architectural costs, but I'm concerned that A, another architect might put, might not put in the extra services that PSA is putting in, which I didn't understand until today, that there was all this extra in there. And also, if we go through another process and we put this off until 2013, our construction costs, I mean, we've been told that they're edging up already. Our construction costs will probably go up by 200 or 300,000, and then we're at a net loss once we take into consideration the cost of putting off the project.
Okay, I guess what we need to do is come to some consensus as to how we want to move with this process then.
To add to what Ms. Lash, it's not the construction cost so much as the guarantee that we'll have to pay for heat. That could be 200 to 300,000. The actual costs are, kind of got to put it out there and find out, and I don't have the crystal ball. But, you know, some of the labor is going up, but for sure, 200, 300,000 will go up if we miss the next year's season. So, that's why I want to get this decided in the next couple of weeks, or tonight, or whatever we can do.
Suggestions as to how we move forward with the process? Mr. Naylor?
Well, I guess I'd just like to comment, I mean, it's been spoken here a couple, three occasions that the process that Alderman Gallagher alluded to is basically a process that has been utilized here. The only thing is, is that you may not particularly have participated in it. But the citizens committee, if you recall, what was that, a couple of years or so ago, had participated in the development of the ideas and the need, needs assessment, I guess, for the police station. There's been studies for the sites in the past. They've. They, the committee even came forth with recommendations for financing, which was not ultimately accepted by the council back at that time. We've done basically all of that type of processing, the QBS, the qualification-based selection process. They narrowed it down to the two firms. It was reaffirmed here a year ago, then, that PSA was the confirmed choice at that time. So we've done a lot of due diligence throughout the past, what, three, four, five years on this project. So, you know, I would support just moving forth with PSA because of all the, even though if you were to go back out and solicit again and go through a process similar, you know, it's going to be several months out there, and in the meantime, likewise, you know, the costs will be going up. So anything that you think you might see, there is even savings, which I rather doubt there is, because we've shown that the fees for PSA D'Ubarry is well within the range of fees that are provided for and paid by other entities that have built similar facilities in recent times. You know, I don't really understand what all the cost concerns are, or when you look at it, they're all well within those ranges. So I just think that we should move forth and stick with PSA and go forth and get the project underway.
Please, Mr. Jacobson.
I know we talked last week in the discussion, we said obviously cost is a, is a big motivator and why we're tapping the brakes on this one and looking into it. And I know one of the several things that was discussed was it's very rare in RFQs for anyone to come back with any sort of numbers or price numbers. Yet I look at our same agenda today, C4 in RFQ includes all of those price numbers for an engineering project and for a project we're looking at. Breaks it all out, who's doing what, who's doing each piece of the project? And it sounded like from the presentation that that is how PSA developed their quote, so they have all those numbers. And I mean, if those numbers are available, and we're doing that in other places, again, I think that that would be relatively easy to ask those three or four companies for those numbers, and then we can apples to apples, this is what this company is charging, this is what this company is charging, and we can see whether or not we're getting a good value. That's all we're looking for at this point.
You know, if I could address that, I understand that. I think that the problem with that is that I think it has to do a lot with the comfort level. I think a lot of it has to do with who we trust to do the job, and who has the background that can deliver what we want to deliver, and knowing what they can deliver. And maybe part of the process is having them go through that, but then I hear several of Aldermen saying that, I think, in the essence of time, that may take several months. My suggestion is that there were four, there were four alternatives that were presented to the council based on conversations, I think, that our assistant city manager had with you all to kind of move forward with this. And I'm wondering, is anyone at this point in time willing to make somewhat of a motion to move forward with one of these options?
Mr. Gallagher?
I would make a motion, and I would compromise on this, instead of using option two, where we throw the baby out with the bathwater and restart the whole process, that we go back and we use the four firms that were selected by Galesburg back in March of just this past year. They've done all the due diligence for us, and it includes two of the firms that we already are considering that made our final two list back in the fall of 2010, both Wold and PSA D'Ubarry. I would ask the staff if they're familiar at all with Cordigan-Clark of Aurora or Itner Architects of Fairview Heights. And if that's acceptable to the other members of the staff, then why don't we follow what Alderman Jacobson just said, and simply send it out? As long as everyone's comfortable, and we go through the small little vetting process, we'll simply slow this down by 30 days.
You'll slow it down far greater than that.
Were you, anybody familiar with those other two firms?
I'm not familiar with the other two firms, and I agree with Ron, you're going to slow it down a lot more than 30 days. And I would ask the council to move forward with PSA.
So there's a motion on the floor, is there a second to his motion?
Ron Naylor, a second, if you please.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Let's do a roll call, please.
Actually, do you have a quick question, only since Wolf is here? In your quoting process, or in your process of doing this, do you do a similar, when you come up with the quote for the project, do you do a similar way of doing it? It's not based on percentage, it's based on what you feel the actual costs will entail and what each hourly would be? Is that how you guys do your quoting system, too?
You want to come forward, please, and speak into the mic so the audience at home can hear you?
In the interest of time, I'll make it very brief. My name is Roger Schrepper with Wold Architects and Engineers, I'm a partner with the company. And we have, basically, our process, we are experts like PSA D'Ubarry, we do a lot of these things, we do time and time again, and we understand how much hours it's going to take and the process is going to take. And so it is basically, a percentage fee that we use is based on our experience of how long it takes to do these types of projects. So we can take our standard fee and break it down into components very easily.
And what type of timeframe would that take you to do?
I could have it to you tomorrow.
And we're worried that it would take more than 30 days, I think that...
Does that answer the question?
I think that answers the question, so...
Any other, any other discussion on the motion on the floor to bid this out, so to speak, to four other, to three firms, three other firms? Yes, please, Tom?
Just clarification, and I guess I'll look to Rudy and Chief for clarification. We talked last time that there were, in the bid, in the selection process that occurred over the last two years, three years, there was a series of firms that presented and gave presentations and supplied information on being selected from a professional standpoint, right? And there were, what, 10, 12, 14? How many, roughly, how many firms did we have originally? Chief, do you remember, roughly, over 10?
It was over 10.
There were over 10.
Okay.
I'm not sure I know what...
I understand. And getting from that 10, as I understand, Rudy, earlier, we, there was a selection process, and we had these interviews with the council, just like we're talking about, just like Galesburg did, which the chief alluded to, that got it down to, I understood at a point in time, there were four.
There were four finalists of which?
And they were brought into a committee.
Correct.
That included members of this council.
Correct.
And that vetted...
No current members of the council.
Well, I understand that, but...
Right.
Part of the council.
Yes.
And due to other delays and a recession and a bunch of other stuff, it was set aside. But those four firms had information about what was going to happen and what was the expectation in building a new building, right? At that time, maybe 55,000 square feet, et cetera. But it was primarily in the scope of our discussion today, basically, right? Rather than entering into something with two additional firms that were not part of those four, what I had suggested at a prior meeting is that maybe we look at those four, if we're going to do this, and do it in that fashion, rather than enter into something that may slow the process down by bringing two firms in that weren't even part of any of those discussions. So if, would that be possible? And still hit a timeline that'd be very quick?
Like 48 hours.
I mean, because they have prior knowledge.
Yeah, they have prior knowledge of DeKalb. Again, just to go back, back in 2007, we narrowed it down to four, of which PSA was selected. In 2010, last year in November, we interviewed two, of which PSA was selected. So if you're asking about the number of firms actually interviewed and made finalists, there's a total of three, five.
Okay, so two this last time and at least two more earlier, so... Okay, so, again, my question goes back, those two could be brought in rather than bringing two new firms into this whole thing.
Exactly. I'm completely fine with that, I would completely accept that. If you went back to your final four, that'd be terrific.
The only comment that probably bears making on that is, if we do bring in other firms, which we certainly can do, the other part of this we have to do, other than just looking at the number, is we have to understand what their scope of services is, and we would, if it's a firm...
Have to do the negotiation, I understand that.
Right.
I mean, the month that Ron's talking about, I think, is still a problem.
Right.
I'm just trying to clarify, I'm not getting off on another tangent that goes even way off kilter. I'm trying to narrow this down to something we can do and stay within timeline.
That's why I simply suggested you take the 15 firms that were vetted down from the other place. If you want to go back to the original four that were processed back in the fall of 2010, who have familiarity with this particular project, I have no problem with that. My biggest concern always is that government is always chastised for overspending. And so I would rather just go back and just simply cross every T, dot every I, and make sure that our comfort level is fine there before we just jump into something. That's all.
Okay, within the interest of time, but we need to move forward. Let's move forward with the motion on the floor, which is to bring the four firms that he mentioned in his memo here.
I'm fine with using the other two that had already passed.
Is there an amendment to that?
Is that an amendment to your motion?
Do you need an amended motion for that clarification?
Is anyone want to amend it to those four before we vote?
Is that a motion, Mr. Alderman Terazinski?
Are you amending that to the four, Tom?
The different four from what Alderman Gallagher...
Yeah, I guess, if this, I'm not sure this is going to pass, but to the extent that if it does, I would like to do it in a way that expedites it, so I guess I would amend it.
Is there a second to amend it to the four firms?
Second to that.
That were the original, okay. Any...
And just for clarification, that is one of our choices, which number was that?
That was number one, I believe.
Number one.
Option one.
So that's PSA D'Ubarry, Wold Architects, and then the other two firms.
Well, again, I do want to make clear, though, Wold was not a finalist the first time. So there were three, there were four, including PSA in 2007.
Okay.
In 2010, it was PSA and Wold. So you're looking at a total of five firms that were, quote unquote, finalists, if you will.
Dave?
How did Wold get into the most recent one without making it through the other one?
It was, it was a different committee, that's all it was.
Did they get proposals from more than just those two?
From what I remember, yes.
So we don't really have two others to go back to, it's just arbitrary. We need to know who were the four finalists in the last round, not the one from two times ago.
Yeah.
But we don't know who those other two are?
Then they may not submit anything, they may choose not to submit.
Well, I mean, my final question, and it's something Mayor Yu and I talked about a few minutes before the meeting, we thought that Wold would be able to make a comment so that we could hear what they might present that would be different about what they would do versus what PSA D'Ubarry was selected to do by the vetting process. And Tom, if you would share with us just a moment, you were on that last round, what you thought the differences between the two were, to be able to pick one, along with Alderman Comus at that time? Because you were on this last round, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, Tom, you were on this last round, I've just learned something that makes me not get all comfortable about going back two steps, if there was a more recent step that included more than, than, I mean, I don't want to go back four years and start arbitrarily picking people of the most recent process, and that's why we're here right now questioning all this, is that things change. If we go back two years and there was a number of companies that submitted, and then it made it to two finalists, I don't want to look at any more than those two finalists if we're forced to look at two finalists.
Dave, if I may, that's why I suggested back with the four that were vetted out by Galesburg back in March of this year, because I knew that there was only two selected back in 2010.
Okay, let's move forward.
Right, we've all had a chance to talk about, Kristen, on the amendment.
Just a very quick question, please. The 30-day number that keeps getting thrown around, if this gets put off by 30 days, does it still get done this, this coming year? Because my top priority is making sure that we get it in the ground and enclosed by winter. Can we do that if we put it off another month?
No.
Okay, keep that in mind as we move forward with the amendment. Let's do a roll call on the amendment that to go back to the four or five firms rather than the four that he suggested.
For purposes of clarity, the motion that, the motion to amend that's before the council right now, was a motion to, the first motion, the underlying motion made by Alderman Gallagher, was a motion to utilize the four firms that Galesburg had selected in their selection process in 2011. The motion to amend was a motion to instead substitute which firms? The original five firms that...
Well, he said four, but I think the clarification...
So that would have been the four firms from 2007 that the City of DeKalb selected, which does not include Wold.
Plus Wold.
Plus Wold.
Okay. Because Wold didn't make the final four from two times ago.
Right. It was five.
Is that, everybody put in...
That's what's on the motion. So that, so Alderman Terazinski, the motion is for the four firms from 2007 plus Wold?
Yes.
Let's do a roll call on this.
Alderman Jacobson?
Yes.
Terazinski?
No.
Lash?
No.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Naylor?
No.
Baker?
No.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Three I, four N.
Okay, so now we're back to the original motion, which is to go with the firms, all the Galesburg firms. I think we've had enough discussion, let's do a roll call on that one, please.
Alderman Terazinski?
No.
Lash?
No.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Naylor?
No.
Baker?
No.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Three I, four N.
Motion fails. Is there another motion then? Kristen, would you like to...
I'd like to motion for option four, retaining PSA.
Is there a second to that? Any discussion on that? Mr. Baker?
Well, if we retain PSA, we need to do a few amendments, like make it clear that they're not part of the, or part of the voting process for the CM.
Well, it'd have to come back at the next meeting.
It'll have to come back at the next meeting. What it would play now...
This is just to move it forward to the next meeting.
Okay, and certainly Alderman Gallagher and the rest of us want to see him sharpen their pencil, or some of us at least, at least two of us do, which I'm...
You could have done that if you voted yes on the last amendment.
I don't want to arbitrarily pick companies that weren't part of this process and put it off 30 days. I am not going to let this go more than a couple of weeks.
Okay, so if this does pass, it will come back as a resolution in the next meeting, and we can address some of these issues that Mr. Baker is wanting to address?
Yes, because it's not listed on the agenda as an action item for approval of the actual contract tonight. The motion that's on the floor would be one to bring it back on the next council agenda as an action item for approval of the agreement.
Okay, so it's been moved by Ms. Lash, I think, seconded by Mr. Baker, was it?
Naylor.
Naylor, to move forward. Any further discussion?
Well, yeah. What is reconsideration all about? It was up for approval the other night when we didn't get to that point. Isn't that essentially what we're doing right now? Maybe that's sort of the hard lesson in parliamentary procedure, what would a reconsideration of the last vote be? Does that have to be like within 24 hours, or the next meeting, or what?
The City of DeKalb has an ordinance that addresses reconsideration, and Robert's Rules also address reconsideration. The Robert's Rules principles are that for a motion for reconsideration to be made, it has to be made by a member of the prevailing party on the original vote, and under the City of DeKalb ordinance, a motion for reconsideration is intended to be made at the first regular meeting following the meeting at which the vote occurred, or at the meeting itself where the vote occurs. In this case, we're going to have to, as staff, look at the way the original motion was made and structured, and what's going to be presented to you as the action item on the agenda.
So is your belief that we can put this back on, that we do have the latitude to put this back on as a new item, even though, because it can't be reconsidered because tonight it wasn't put on and reconsidered?
Yes, I think that because of the way the Open Meetings Act affects our use of parliamentary procedure, that we can develop a way to get this back on the agenda as an action item.
After, at our regular meeting?
At our regular meeting next...
At the next council meeting.
No, tonight.
Which is...
Not tonight, because it's not on the agenda.
Okay, so we don't have to pressure it.